Chair.
Oh, I'll rename that.
Really? Does he, you know, he doesn't give up, does he?
So, good evening and welcome. I'm Natasha Spata, Chair of the Needham Planning Board. I'm calling the July 11th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to Order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast to the town's YouTube channel and also via Zoom, and if applicable, by the Needham channel, right? And it's being recorded for publication later viewing and administrative purposes. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. And I'll call the roll for the record. When I call your name, please say you're present. I'm going to call the board members that are present in the room, Paul Alpert.
Here.
And Justin McCullen.
Here.
And on Zoom, we have Adam Block.
Present.
And Artie Crocker.
Here.
Great. And we have Lee Newman and Alex Kle with us today also. So, our agenda tonight, we have one public hearing. That's a continuation of the public hearing for Blue on Highland from 6/424, which went back to Design Review Board to review the facade and have approval from Design Review Board. We have a... The second thing is a decision for Major Project Site Plan Special Permit for the tennis courts at the high school. We have another decision for the Major Project Site Plan Special Permit for the noodle restaurant at Needham Center. We have a request to review the landscape plan for 920 South Street. A Board of Appeal, there are two cases where we'll be making a recommendation on. Review the meeting minutes, report from the Planning Board and Board members, and then correspondence. So, with that, do I need to ask for motion to reopen the hearing?
No.
I can just...
It's already open.
No, you don't even, no, there's no motion. We just reopen it.
Or reopen?
You're the chair.
Okay.
Okay.
So, move to reopen the hearing on Major Project Site Plan Special Permit for Blue on Highland. And just from the last time, what I understand is that we now have Fire Department approval, which we did not have last time. The fixture in the bathroom needs to satisfy building inspector based on plumbing code. And there's a question about the ownership of the restaurant that needs to be transferred with our authority and that I know came up later. So, so if you can please introduce yourselves and make your presentation, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Miller from McDermott, Willie Miller and Hamley in Boston again. I'm joined again by Scott Gregoff, the COO of the applicant. We're happy to be back here again after meeting with the Design Review Board and making some minor revisions to the plans. As, just as a quick reminder, this is all related to the expansion to the existing space next door, former nail salon. Since we were before you, as I said, we went to the Design Review Board. We're still proposing to bring the facade forward as we were, to kind of close off that door space and make it one contiguous space in the interior and remove the signage above that space. We have revised the sill heights to make them match the existing sill height in the existing restaurant. So, the windows will now be, instead of bringing the other ones up, we're bringing these down. It'll be one contiguous look. The, the project architect has taken inspiration from the facade of the existing space and brought it over to upgrade the appearance of the new, new space. It carries brick and wood elements over. And we'll upgrade that overall experience to make it, as I said, one cohesive contiguous look. Same with the awning that is, you know, the Design Review Board approves with the logo and whatnot. This former nail salon, you know, as I said last time, and I won't waste too much of your time by going over, the taking this over and this addition of the space to expand the restaurant will, you know, they know what they're doing. They've done a very good job for almost 20 years now and will continue to do so. Will be a benefit to Needham and, you know, no detriment to the community. So, in the, in the consideration of time, I will be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay. And just, I just want to recognize comments from the town entities, Belize Fire, Building Inspector, Board of Health, Engineering, all of them have reviewed. The only question was, Board of Health issues have been resolved and Building Inspector had the issue with the bathroom as a question, right?
Yeah, and we're, we're working with them to make sure that that...
So, my understanding is that it's a special permit use for the use and a parking waiver as well as the ownership transition?
Yes.
Right, first leasing. So, any comments from the board?
Well, approving the ownership transition, we usually, I shouldn't say we usually, we always. We always ask because we would like the confirmation that you have read the special permits and all of the amendments and that you agree to adhere to.
Yes, and I've been with Blue on Highland for a number of years right now. And I was part of the revisions of the whole renovation to move the space around a little bit in 2015. And I did review the special permits at that time as well when they did the initial one in 2006 of the area.
Great.
Any other questions, Paul?
No, that's it. Thanks.
I'm satisfied with the Belize submission and the confirmation of the Design Report and the new sketches. So, I didn't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Same for myself. And then, Adam and Artie, any questions? Or comments?
Artie, do you want to go first?
Just, just, no, just a curiosity is, I believe initially it was going to be the original windows were going to change to match the new space. Now it sounds like the new space is going to match and the original window is going to stay the same. Is that what's happening? Just, just to clarify in the, in the...
Yeah, no, the, you, the dimensions of the windows in the new space will be brought over to the dimensions to match in the, the...
The cell.
The, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the size of the windows in the new space will be the same as the size of the windows in the existing space.
Yeah.
So, instead of bringing the new space up to ma, or the old space up to match the new space, the new space is going down to match the old space.
Yeah, because I think when you were first here, I think it was the opposite way. It makes sense to, at least I think it was.
It was.
Makes sense to have the new windows match the old windows, if that's what's going on. That's what's going on now. No, no questions.
I'm having trouble hearing what Artie is saying. Can she hear me?
Yes.
Anyway, it's, it's fine. I like the idea of the, the new windows changing to match the old windows. No other questions.
I have some questions on the decision, but shall we wait until we come to that agenda item?
I think so, yeah.
And we need to close the hearing first and then...
Sure. And lastly, what are we outstanding on before we close the hearing?
The, the only things that we have is the Building Inspector had an issue with the bat, with the plumbing in the bathroom and asking if there needs to be another fixture. Is that correct?
I believe, so it's a single stall bathroom.
Right.
We're still checking on, you know, so the, we're checking on the rule of the space in addition to the main space on what's required for bathroom space. Right now, in the current space, we have three bathrooms, one being a handicap bathroom and then a men's room and a women's room. This will add a fourth bathroom, which is, will be a unisex bathroom with one stall. So, we'll have a total of four bathrooms for the total space. But we are looking into seeing, to make sure that that...
Complies.
Complies and makes the requirement for how that has to be that, that next, the bathroom in that space.
So, are we able to close the hearing then?
I'm sorry, Adam?
Are we able to close the hearing then, or do we need confirmation of that before?
Do we need to open up for public comment, or?
Yes, open up for public. Actually, the draft decision addresses that, Adam, it's required as a plan modification to the extent it's required by the building commissioner.
Okay.
Yeah, so any, any other questions or? So, then let's open it up for public comment. Are those the four people that are here?
No.
No, it's the other group, three. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll just read anyway. This, it doesn't look like there are any hands up, but we'll still read it just in case there is some public comment. As we open up to public comment, I would like to remind attendees of our ground rules for public hearings to ensure an accurate public record and to enable a fair platform to hear from our neighbors. Please state your name and address clearly for the record. Keep your remarks to three minutes so we can hear from as many people as possible. If you have multiple points to make and need more time, we will genuinely attempt to return to you after others that have not spoken or given a chance to speak. Please address your comments through the chair. Simply saying that you agree with a previous speaker is a great way to have your voice heard while making time available to hear from our other neighbors. And unless a question can be easily answered by a board member, staff, and the applicant, we may ask staff to note your question so we can review, consider, and subsequently answer it. And you can also provide comments in writing by email to planning@needham.gov, although if we're closing the hearing, you have a couple of minutes to send them. So, with that, do we see, do we have anyone here who would like to make a statement or public comment or anyone online? So, it doesn't seem like there's anyone. So, with that...
I'm going to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, so, motion by Paul, second by Justin. Any questions? So, all in favor, say aye.
I think if they're remote, I think you have to do a roll call.
Oh, okay. So, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Justin.
Hi.
I'm going to mess up your last name. McCullen. Adam Block.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
And Natasha Spata, the chair, say aye. So, okay, so the, the hearing is closed. And now we need to, someone needs to make a motion to, to review the, to review the decision.
Yeah, so does the board have any comments on the draft?
No, I had, I made my comments and my comments were all addressed. You read the decision and are you all set with it?
I am. I did, I am. I have some comments or questions.
Yes, Adam.
In 3.4, why are we restricting the number of lunch service employees?
In which provision?
It was, yeah, I'm going off. This is, my numbers all relate to the first packet that was sent, not the revised packet.
Okay.
So, it says the restaurant as a whole shall contain no more than 177 seats for onsite food consumption at one takeout station. Because it's 137 seats and 40 space in, in the current space and 40 seats in the space located at 990 Highland Avenue.
I don't think that's the provision he was referring.
I think he's not talking about paragraph 3.5. And Adam, the reason for that was, was when the base permit was issued at the time, the original permit, I think, those were the number of employees that were proposed. And because the site didn't have onsite parking, there was a condition put in to reflect what the employee count would be during the times, as it was represented by the applicant, it would be applied.
So, let me ask this of the applicant then and his attorney. Are, you know, lunch service there can be, you know, a pretty good opportunity for the operation. Do you still want to limit the number of seats you serve in, at lunch and the number of employees?
So, right now, we, I think we're under the, the employees that we should be having for, you know, the number of seats in our restaurant for a lunch period as well. So, with that addition, it's almost, they're, they're almost going to be able to take care of that with what we have right now. The, you know, in a chain like, you know, Bertucci's or say 99, you know, the, the way that they run those restaurants is they only give people certain sections, like a three-table section or a four-table section. We're, we're a little more generous than that. So, they do have a little more space. So, I don't see us really adding any staff for that. It's mostly going to be overflow or private parties that we're going to utilize that for. I don't really see us using it at max capacity on a lunch. We may go on a wait here and there.
I, I understand, I understand that on the, for the lunch, not having the need for that newer space. But just because it's come up in this draft of the decision, it sounds like you don't see a need to increase then, or to remove the restriction on the number of employees for your lunch service. You're satisfied with, as it says right now in the decision.
I believe so.
And with the increased capacity, you're already running under the amount of staff that you're, the cap.
Yeah.
You don't see exceeding, needing, the need to exceed the cap with the increased capacity.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
So, I am good with what it is at, at this point.
Great. I had a couple more comments and questions. In what was 3.7, I, Lee, just for clarification, when we talk about occupancy, occupancy, is that after the construction period or does that include the renovation period and the contractor's crew?
What are you looking at in the decision?
3.7? Or what was 3.7?
Why don't you read what you're...
Yeah. Because I only have my notes up in front of me. I don't have the decision.
Unless there's no building or portion thereof subject to the site plan review shall be occupied. So, it's basically covering the new space, was not supposed to be utilized.
But my point is, if occupancy refers to the period of time when, you know, when Scott and the restaurant ownership has the crew renovating premises.
No.
It doesn't refer to that.
Fine, good. So, that's resolved. In what was then 3.7B, I think we should add is before in?
Can, because I don't, we don't have the what was. So, can you just?
Can you tell us what the sentence says and then we can find it here?
I'll have to go through the new packet to get it.
What are you changing?
Well, it looks like the numbering hasn't changed, so. Maybe it has changed.
No.
I think it went down.
I think it did, because we added.
So, it all went down by one. So, 3.7 became 3.8. So, no building or structure or portion thereof subject to the special permit and site plan approval shall be occupied until A, an as-built plan supplied by the Architect of Record certifying the project was built according to the approved documents has been submitted to the board; B, that there shall be filed with the building commissioner, statement by the board approving the as-built plan for the restaurant facility in accordance with this decision and the approved plan. So, what?
I think I had read it a little differently before in a prior draft, I guess. So, thanks for, for clarifying that. I have no further comments.
Thanks, Adam. Artie, any comments?
No, no good.
Okay. So, with that, we have not made any changes, right?
Well, not to the draft with the red line changes we have.
So...
So, therefore, first, before we get to the decision, I move that we grant a Major Project Site Plan Special Permit Amendment under Section 7.4 of the Needham Zoning Bylaw and Section 4.2 with a Major Project Special Permit Number 2005-05, dated September 20, 2005, as amended May 9, 2006, that we grant a special permit under Section 3.2.2 of the bylaw for a restaurant serving meals for consumption on the premises and at tables with service provided by waitress or waiter in the Avery Square Business District; that we grant a special permit under Section 3.2.2 of the bylaw for more than one non-residential building or use on a lot; that we grant a special permit under Section 1.4.6 of the bylaw for the alteration of a non-conforming structure; and that we grant a special permit under Section 5.1.1.5 of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the requirements of Sections 5.1.2 and 5.1.3 of the zoning bylaw regarding off-street parking requirements subject to and with the benefit of the conditions and limitations set forth in the decision.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, the motion was made by Paul Alpert and Justin McCullen seconded. So, any questions? So, all in favor, say aye.
More call.
Roll call.
Okay, that's right. So, Adam Block.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Justin McCullen.
Aye.
So, and Natasha Spata, aye, as the chair. And so, so the motion is accepted and, and approved. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, oh, I move that we accept the decision as presented in our packet with the red line changes as presented, seconded.
So, Paul Alpert made the motion, took up the decision with Justin McCullen seconded. Any questions? All in favor, oh, and I'm going to do a roll call, sorry. Adam Block.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Paul Alpert.
Aye.
McCullen.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. So, the motion is approved and so the decision is approved as well. Right?
Thank you very much.
And I would just like to say that we do need four members to sign the decision. We have three tonight. But Adam and Artie, whoever of you is back in town soonest, could you stop by our office and sign it? And then I'll let the other one know that it's taken care of. So, normally I would bring the decision to the clerk the next day, but we do have to wait to get that fourth signature. So, I'll let you know as soon as we're there. And I will do it as soon as possible.
I'm probably, I'm probably out of town until maybe Friday.
I'm out of town till the 29th.
Like tomorrow?
No.
Or the next Friday?
Next Friday, sorry.
Go back first, Adam.
I'm back first? Okay. All right, I'll be in touch with Alex.
We'll get to there as soon as we can.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so, we have two decisions, the first one being the Major Project Site Plan Special Permit for, sorry, the noodle restaurant at Needham Center. So, please come up. We just, as they're coming up, George in the group, we have correspondents from the fire chief indicating no problems with the project. Did we do the high school? Did I miss the high school here?
That's, you know, that's okay. We're, we can go back.
That's just for us.
There's no time assigned to it.
Okay.
If nobody's here for it.
Did we already close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we have correspondents from the fire chief indicating no problems with the project. We have correspondents from George Jenta with the max number of employees, which is a max of four. And we have a draft decision. So, George, do you?
So...
Do you want to go through the changes?
George Jenta Jr. for the applicant. And with me is Tom Chen and Ray Zhang, the owners, proprietors of the restaurant. So, yeah, so I had seen, Lee provided me with a draft decision. I sent back some comments. I don't know, I haven't seen anything since then.
Oh, yes, they're incorporated, sorry.
So, I don't know if there's any, been anything else, but otherwise, with my edits, I'm fine with this.
Okay, great. Any comments or questions from the, from the board?
Has George seen the changes that?
I didn't email them back to him. He sent me his changes. I put them in. I'm sorry I didn't send you the final.
Oh, that's right. If you represent the, it basically has the changes in them. I'll take that.
Okay, so the one change that I made, I believe there was just one change. I mean, I, I corrected a type, a couple of typographical type errors. But the one change that I made was, there was a, let me go back to...
You added a phrase, "as determined by the Board of Health."
Yeah, there, there, it stated that there would be one or more supplemental additional dumpsters will, will, will be added adjacent to the existing dumpster if necessitated. And I added, we're putting in the phrase, "as determined by the Board of Health." Yeah. Other than that, it should be what you have reviewed.
I have a quick question. So, the, the transfer, right, the, the transfer has already been completed or?
Transfer?
Yeah, it's a, wasn't there, let me see. It's a certificate, like the transfer, it's a certification or something to that effect. Am I wrong on that, Lee?
I'm sorry, I was, yes, you're right. It's, it's, yes, I'm sorry.
Was there a, it says, in, well, you had here, in Section 3.10, we require Planning Board approval to any transfer by the applicant. Is there a transfer on this?
We require that, that if they decide, if, if, if it's sometime in the future, this entity chooses to transfer this restaurant to another entity, that they have to come back and basically dock, basically acknowledge that the terms of the original permit. And then we've been, the transfer will occur with the planning board's approval.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a standard procedure.
Okay. I thought it was very specific to this. That's why I was confused. Okay. Okay, I don't have any questions.
I had in 3.19, this is very small, we still cite the Board of Selectmen instead of the Select Board.
Oh.
That change was, yeah, so, 3.19 where it says Conservation Commission, Police Department, Board of Selectmen, and Board of Health. Just, that was really the only thing that I blared out.
At least we got the building commissioner instead of the building inspector. So, went out of two-way ban.
Okay, great. Adam or Artie, any questions?
No.
No.
Happens here, come in.
Okay. Artie's still pretty low. Can you hear him well?
Yeah, I...
Can you hear me?
Your audio is low.
Your audio's a little low.
If I speak this, if I speak right here, is this okay? Is this acceptable?
Yeah.
It's better, yeah.
Okay, I'll get closer to the computer. My apologies, my apologies.
We'll just see you bigger.
Yeah.
So, are we ready for the?
I think, yeah.
For the motion?
Right, yes.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, I move that we grant a Major Project Site Plan Review Special Permit, well, this is in regard to, in regard to special permit, well, the application for a Major Project Site Plan Special Permit by our WR Noodle Group. I'll have to get back to what I'm reading. I move that we grant a Major Project Site Plan Review Special Permit under Section 7.4 of the bylaw; that we grant a special permit under Section 3.2.2 of the bylaw for a restaurant serving meals for consumption on the premises and at tables with service provided by waitstaff, waitress, or waiter in the center business district; that we grant a special permit under Section 3.2.2 of the bylaw for the takeout operation accessory to a restaurant serving meals for consumption on the premises; that we grant a special permit under Section 3.2.2 of the bylaw for more than one non-residential building or use on a lot; that we grant a special permit under Section 1.4.6 of the bylaw for the change and/or extension of a lawful pre-existing non-conforming use or building if, if applicable; and that we grant a special permit under Section 5.1.1.6 of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the requirements of Section 5.1.2 regarding required parking; and Section 5.1.3 of off-street parking requirements subject to and with the benefit of the plan modifications, conditions, and limitations set forth in our decision.
Second.
Okay, so, the motion was made by Paul Alpert, seconded by Justin McCullen. Any questions? So, we'll take a vote. I'll start online here. Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I, the chair, so the motion is approved and...
And now I move that we approve the decision as presented in our packet with the red line changes that are there and with the one change that was requested tonight.
Second.
Okay, so again, the motion by Paul, the second by Justin. Any questions? We'll take a vote. Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Justin?
Aye.
And I, I for myself as well as the chair. So, it's been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Yeah, best of luck.
George, a new restaurant.
Yeah, very exciting.
We'll get the decision moving as soon as we can.
It sounds like next Friday or following, right? Thank you. Okay, then, so we'll go back to the decision for the Major Project Site Plan Permit for the tennis courts at the high school. We have a draft decision. So, does anyone have any changes to the draft decision?
I had a question. I had a question.
Yeah, I'm like, who's speaking? Yes.
I had a question, and the decision in paragraph seven, under, in the conditions.
I'm having trouble.
Yeah, it's very low, Adam, let me see if we can, we can, give me one second, we're gonna see if we can increase the volume.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking it's in the, the room there, because I can hear Adam fine.
Yeah, we're, we're looking.
Artie's screaming.
Can you talk again, one of you?
Hi, this is Adam, testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three.
It's a little, but, yeah, we need it louder, because?
The quick brown fox dumped over the lazy dog.
You guys are, sound like you're whispering to us.
We're, we're not whispering, and, you know.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll listen closely.
All right, Adam.
So, just in, in paragraph seven, I, I don't think, I don't think I saw, like, the vote record. Normally, in our decisions, it says by vote of 5-0 or whatever.
Wait, Adam, what's paragraph seven?
Of the decision for the tennis courts?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four.
1.7?
What section?
What section?
7.
Findings and conclusions?
Right, conditions.
Conditions, 3.7?
3.7?
3.7?
Sorry, did I screw this all up? I, what, what page number in the packet is this one? In the new packet?
Page 37?
It's number, it's on, it's page eight of the decision.
The decision starts on page 30, Adam, of the packet.
Normally, it talks about the vote, by a vote of, oh, it does, here, it is. It's after, it's before the plan modifications. I'm fine, I have no comments. I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries.
Right.
Artie, any questions?
No, I'm happy to have this thing move forward, and I think the, the balance between the neighbors and the town, I think, worked out as best as it can.
Great, thank you, Artie. Paul, any questions?
No, Adam and Artie, did you see the red line change that we made? Just that, that there were some conditions with regard to work. It was mentioned for Highland Avenue and Webster Street, and we added Rosemary Street.
Yes, I saw that, yes.
In construction.
I saw that, thank you.
So, with that.
And so, I have a quick question, just, we talked about signage. Did we determine that, how was signage going to be done? Do we have it here? I couldn't find it.
Yeah, we do.
I just remember signage being a big deal.
It was under section 3.4. Signage shall be installed to inform users of the regulations as stated in conditions 3.2 and 3.3 in this decision.
Okay.
And any, any other rules per park or department, as well as provide information of who, of who to inform if the rules are not followed. I think we said there should be a minimum of four such signs of this information dispersed throughout the site and made visible to users.
Okay, excellent. Okay, I'm fine with that. So, with that, do we have a motion?
All right, I move that we approve the requested amendment to the special, to the site plan special permit, application number 2004-01. Originally dated April 6, 2004, is amended. Go back here. Oh, therefore, I move that we grant the requested amendment to the major project site plan special permit under section 7.4 of the Needham zoning bylaw and section 4.2 of the major project special permit number 2004-01, dated April 6, 2004, is amended January 5, 2010, December 6, 2011, October 27, 2015, July 19, 2016, August 9, 2016, November 28, 2017, and August 7, 2018, subject to and with the benefit of the plan modifications, conditions, and limitations set forth in the decision.
Second.
So, the motion to grant the relief was made by Paul, seconded by Adam. Any questions or comments? We'll take a vote, Adam Block?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Justin McCullough?
Aye.
And aye, the chair, so, the motion is approved, and is there?
I move that we approve the decision with the red line changes set forth in our packet.
Second.
So, motion to accept the decision by Paul, seconded by Justin. Any questions? With that, we'll take a vote, Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And aye, the chair, so, looks like it's, it's been accepted, and for the decision, and what else do we need to do with it? Can we sign this? Oh, we can't sign any of them, right?
No, you should sign all of them.
We, we will, but we're waiting for Adam.
Exactly, so, do you want to do that now, or do you want to do it at the end? It's, what up to you guys?
Doesn't matter, whatever is easier for you.
Let's do it at the end, because everybody's here.
Yeah, because everybody's here for the next one.
Okay, you guys can start passing it whenever you're ready.
So, with that, we move on to our next agenda item, which is request review and approve landscaping plan of the subdivision at 920 South Street. So, after the last meeting, just to recap a little bit, we have George Jenta, we have Brian Condon coming on. After the last meeting, the landscape plan was reviewed by Ed Olson, and Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, he's the superintendent of Parks and Forestry for approval of the landscape plans and plantings, and feels that they're correct height for the latest plan. That it's better to install the smaller trees and the larger trees. We're here to review the landscape plan with revisions, which needs to be approved before any further work continues on the site, and the final language for the buffer planting strip covenant and restriction. So, and this is based on the decision that was made, and then after that, we will be reviewing the additional plan that Paul had requested. Is that correct?
Lee, I think you asked to have, to have him try to work out the landscaping, whether your butter on the other side of the property.
On the other side, yeah.
Right.
But that's separate from, from the original, right?
That's a, that's a, yes, that's separate from this plan.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're gonna do each independently. Okay, so, with that.
Okay, so, I think you have a revised, revised, revised landscape plan that incorporates, I think, almost all the changes that have been requested with respect to the Easterly side, with respect to Dr. Aliyah's side. The one, there's one sort of question, that is, the landscape plan, as it currently stands, shows fence going up all along the property. I know that Attorney Fogel has requested that that be removed. My preference is to keep that on there, just because, in my experience, 10 years from now, this board maybe have an entirely different composition of people who, who don't know the ins and outs and details, and I'd rather have it on the plan, so that it's memorialized for the future, that, that it was discussed, and that there was, it was contemplated that there would be a fence. I'd rather not get into the situation where 10 years from now, somebody looks at that and says, well, this plan doesn't show offense, because we've had that in prior situations as well. But I think, other than that issue, I think the landscape plan has combined two of the notes that were previously separate, they're now combined into one note, cleans up the, the trees, shows them where they go, indicates they're six foot on center, and the species, and so I think that is now set.
Okay, is that, go ahead.
Lee, can you educate us about what our bylaw says about putting up fences? Would they, if the plan doesn't show the fence, would they have to come back to us for permission to put up a fence?
On their property?
Yeah, on their own property? Or does the bylaw allow them?
To do it by?
Right, to do it just by going to the building commissioner.
I'm not sure, because you have, you have a deed, you have a restriction here. It's kind of talking about what's, I, I don't know that I have the answer, Paul. Because you have a buffer strip easement here with certain conditions that are now being put on record. I don't know how that, how that interfaces with.
George, I'm inclined, I'm inclined to leave the fence off if the agreement between the parties is that the fence is not going to go up. I don't want to have a situation where the plan shows a fence, the parties have agreed to not put the fence up, and then, a couple of years down the road, all of a sudden, there's a fence there because it's on the plan, and Mr. Fogel and his client are in front of us again, saying, why did you let him do that?
So, actually, the intention is to put a fence up, which is why it's shown on the plan, and why it's shown running along the, originally, it was shown just in the buffer strip, because that's what we were talking about, but we've since revised it to show that it's not, it's not that the idea is just to put it in the buffer strip, it, the idea is to put it along the entire property line.
And the intention is to do that when?
The intent is to do it right away, is what you're saying?
No, not necessarily right away, but at some point. Probably not until after the plantings are done, or maybe at the same time as the plantings are done.
Mr. Fogel, you want? Do you want us to participate now and simplify it?
Sure. Yes, yes, please approach and introduce yourself.
So, Brian, this is the one you sent me at 6:00 today, just.
Nice to see you at first.
Nice to see you as well.
Yeah, and please say your name, for the record.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, that's, that's the version that's here, so everybody knows.
The new version.
Barry Fogel from Keegan Worland here for Dr. Aliyah. So, this plan actually does a great job of capturing the agreement on the landscaping. The box in red has text in there that we've exchanged. It's pretty straightforward. The area where the trees are shown is the correct number of trees in the correct stretch of the buffer strip. Our view of the fence being on the plan is that it was not a condition of the subdivision approval that the, this is for landscaping only, that stormwater swale and the landscaping would come back. This will actually, disagree with my brother, it will give the impression that it is part of your approval for there to be a fence, and I happen to believe that fencing is not within the subdivision review, nor was it a requirement or an issue in terms of landscaping. So, while Dr. Aliyah might have no problem with a fence at some point, he might want to talk with whomever it is that puts it up as to the type of fence that's not addressed here. And so, it kind of, it kind of is a loose end, a remnant, a sort of a hanging chad. It's just out there as something that's not really part of your decision, and if, I believe your bylaws are, you go to the building inspector for fencing, right? I don't recall whether you need to go to the building commissioner, or you can just put up a fence.
Put up a fence, yeah.
I mean, I've got a fence on my property, I'd never went to the building commissioner to get permission to put up a fence. I'm not your attorney, but.
Some time ago, I did have a discussion with the applicant or developer, about the fence, he did tell me that he wanted to put a fence, and I told him right away, go ahead, if you decide to do that, you can go ahead and put a fence. I didn't object to it, but we did discuss, it was Attorney Fogel, that this is kind of, this plan will be recorded, and it's kind of strange to see a fence there, which is recorded. He can put a fence on anything he wants, and they have no problem with it. He wants to put a fence on his property, fine with it.
I agree.
Why is there?
We've also discussed the possibility of the fence being put on the other side of the trees, rather than being on the butter's side of the trees. But that's within his right, I mean, it's on his own property.
It's on his property, yeah.
That was mentioned the first night that you.
Yeah, I raised that.
It was, it was a question of whether it would be, yeah, okay.
But they could have a discussion about it. The simple point I'm making from your, from your decision standpoint is it's not really part of the subdivision review, it's really not part of the subdivision approval, it's really not landscaping. This would be a much cleaner thing to not have the fence shown on the landscaping plan that you're approving as part of your decision. That's, that's our view.
And I will say, I don't entirely disagree. However, it has come up in the past, at least one subdivision where a stone wall was built, and the stone wall was not shown on the original subdivision plan, so, then it was, they had to amend the subdivision plan to add the stone wall. So, my concern is that.
Stone walls aren't fences.
True, but my concern is, again, down the road, if there's not some memorialization that it was contemplated that a fence be there, you know, I'm, I don't have a strong objection to not, to taking it off the plan, as long as there's some, somewhere in the record, there's something that can be pointed to at some point down the road.
Yeah.
To say, yep, it was contemplated that there may be a fence there. There's the video recordings here, large debates and minutes, you know, et cetera.
I also think there's a vote that you are gonna take that approves it, right? The draft of the covenant talks about it, I think we could even plug a sentence into the covenant that says this is, is not, there's no.
Shall not prohibit.
Does not prohibit the installation of a fence in accordance with applicable local bylaw or something, you know.
I think, I think.
So, it's clear that there's no prohibition of it. I'm just noticing that this plan says proposed grading plan. Shouldn't this be changed to say proposed landscape plan?
Or grading, grading and landscaping, because it looks like there is grading there as well.
Well, I think it's because it was pulled off, pulled from the grading plan sheet from the subdivision set.
Right, so before it's finalized. Well, it's in your set as sheet five, and the covenant refers to it as sheet five of the eight sheets. I think that's, that's an effort for Vern to be changing the name of the plan. I think the fact that in the revision box, which is next to the stamps, it might be worth just having somebody in red type in landscaping added July 2024, without changing the name of the plan, as a revision.
As a bulletin or something.
Rather than changing the name of the plan.
That's a good, that's a good solution.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's.
Yeah.
Just have them write that in, because they, the only thing new on that plan that should be noted in the revisions is the red box, the red arrows in the legend, and then the, the green, and then the landscaping in the code, so, yeah. Because there's a date to it, that becomes the plan that's cited in the covenant. So, George, are you suggesting that if we approve it with the plan show, with the plan showing a fence, because you're saying you want us to kind of acquiesce, and then, and then your client decides he doesn't want to put the fence there, he wants to put it a few feet in? He has to come back to us to revise his plan?
Well, that's a good point, too.
It's cleaner.
I think it's cleaner if it's not there.
I think, I think if we do it, if we do it as a, add in to the, the buffer covenant, buffer restriction, that explicit language says it shall not prohibit construction of a fence in accordance with applicable law, statute regulations.
Then it covers you. Yeah, I usually see fences on drawings, so to me, it doesn't matter, but if we have no proof of it anyway. Any, any questions from Justin? Any questions from Adam or Artie?
My question was really about the, I guess, the east side, because we had comments from that neighbor as well, and.
Right, and that we're gonna do that as a separate piece, because that wasn't part of the decision, right?
Right.
That, that's an, an add-on that we'll deal with right after we do this vote.
This is just about approving the landscape plan, is it?
It's, it's approving the landscape plan and anything related to the decision. Right, am I correct?
And the buck in the, in the easement.
And the easement, right.
Or the restriction, landscape restriction.
Right, but then we'll go to that one next. Yes.
I'm sorry, I had thought that the conversation about the other side would be included in the, in the landscape plan, but.
I think because the decision did not include that, the decision is about this particular piece, and yours would be discussed right after, is that correct?
That's how I was gonna process it, Paul, you were.
Yeah. Because it's, I mean, we already have a decision that only talks about landscaping on this side of the property. And so, your request is really to kind of open up the decision, to amend the decision itself, rather than just approving the landscape plan.
Right, we have to, right, we have to approve, yes.
They've got a very specific condition in the approval. It says that they need a landscaping plan that addresses the boundary on the west side.
Yes.
So, they've got, I really like to keep that intact, have that resolved on the west side, and then you are asking, as the gentleman said, to sort of reopen.
The east side.
For the east side. They need to be kept separate?
Understood.
Yeah, and we will, we will, but we just want to keep it separate and keep it clean. So any other ques, oh, Artie's hand is up.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, sir. Just, I mean, I have no problem leaving it off the plan as far as the fence goes. I think perhaps we've already determined everyone's fine with that. One question I have, Lee, is that have we ever approved fences in subdivision plans? One question about that. And then the other question is, so we are going to vote on this decision, then we're, then we are going to vote an amendment to this decision. Is that what's going on? Just to clarify, we're going to have an amendment to this decision.
With regard to the, with regard to the east side, that.
Yeah, with regard to the east side, yes, with regard to the east side.
Right.
We couldn't vote an amendment.
No, because we have to, we would have to have a whole new hearing.
Correct.
Right.
I just heard an amendment, but, but Lee, have we, have we ever had fences on the plan?
We've had fences on subdivision plans, I mean, there have been cases where people wanted a fence and not landscaping. So, I mean, there are certain, there have been cases where a fence was installed as opposed to landscaping where that was deemed to be appropriate.
I mean, just fences, they have a right to do it. Okay, I'm fine, okay, thank you. That's it, thank you.
Okay, so if there are no other comments, is there a motion to approve the plan with the modifications that we discussed?
Some move.
Some move.
Could I interject, are you going to approve that separately from the covenant? Or are you going to put them together? The reason I say that is we still have a couple of comments. We got pretty close on a bunch of languages, there's a couple of things that we'd like to still suggest for the covenant. So I didn't know if you wanted to do it in two steps for the plan and the covenant, or the plan and the covenant together.
What do you think, Paul?
What do you think, Lee?
This is like potato.
Well, let's, let's take up the other one and then we can vote them sequentially.
Okay.
So help and understanding about where they both are, then we can vote them sequentially.
All right. So we're all set on the landscape plan?
Yes, that's.
But we're not totally 100% there yet on the covenant restrictions.
Correct, so we'll discuss that in a second.
So where are we, guys?
So we, the, the motion to approve the plan with the, with the modifications, right?
Uh, no, we're going to discuss the covenants and restrictions first and then we'll.
Oh, I thought we were doing separate votes. Oh, okay, okay, I thought you were, okay, okay, so, so who would like to begin?
Let, let me just take a stab, because I think, because if you're going to go through the, that we're in the draft that I.
Not all of them, because some of what you put in clarified some things, so it's just now we're down to.
So let me address, so there are a few, yeah, so there are a few notable differences. And I think it may be a matter of preferences to procedure than anything else. So in the two different drafts that we're working with, the draft that Attorney Fogel has presented has in it some language about a report from a certified arborist that the certified arborist oversees installation, both with respect to the initial planting and with respect to anything down the road.
I took out the stuff about reports down the road.
Okay. So I took, I took all that out, and let me explain why I took that out. Because it wasn't just to, just to take it out, there was a, there was a thought behind it. As a part of the subdivision process, once everything is all done, in order to close out the process and get the release of the bond, which of course Brian's going to want to do, we have to come back with as-built plans and final reports. I have no issue or objection if the board wants to require a, a letter or something from the, the arborist that supervises the installation, that it was done correctly. Because we are going to have an arborist supervise the installation, so we have no objection to that in practice. I have no objection to a letter or, or, I don't want to call it a report, because that anticipates something more formal and more involved. But something from the arborist that says, basically confirms it was done right. I don't want to put all that in the covenant, because the covenant is more prospective, looking forward. And this is more about the subdivision construction sort of currently. So I'd rather have the board deal with that through the as-built process and, and keep it there, rather than put it into the covenant, which deals with sort of, after everything's all done, going forward from there. So that's why I took that out, because I didn't want the covenant to sort of be talking, basically duplicating essentially what the subdivision anticipates and essentially saying, this is what you're supposed to do now, but, and then down the road as well. So I kind of want to keep those separate. And then with respect to down the road, I just didn't want to have, you know, if, if a tree dies and it has to be replaced, I don't want there to have to, I didn't want there to have to be a requirement that an arborist come in and, and necessarily supervise and certify it, because there is the affirmative obligation to replace. So if they, if they don't put it in right and it dies again, well, guess what, they just got to.
Yeah, scratch that.
They just got to do it again, so, so that was my thought. So it wasn't, we don't have an objection to the general concept, the principle of having an arborist supervise and having an arborist give, you know, some sort of report or a letter or something. I just don't want to have that in the actual covenant document.
But does our current decision, I, I assume our current decision says that at some point down the road, there has to be an as-built plan that's submitted.
Well, there's a, there is a street acceptance, or there's a street design plan, but subdivision itself is bonded. I mean, we, we didn't specifically address this issue, but certainly as part of the bonding process, we could even put it in the agreement. I mean, there's an agreement, we can add a condition in the agreement.
Okay, so we don't have to go back and amend the decision?
I think the way, the best, probably the best way to do it was when he asked for the release of a lots and we take money to guarantee that he's going to finish the subdivision in accordance with the plan. We could add a specific provision in there that specifically calls out that, in addition to the normal requirements, that we're going to have to have some kind of letter from an arborist on the landscaping. An, an as-built landscaping plan and a letter from the arborist.
That works for you, George?
Yes, yeah, that's.
That works for you, Barrett?
Yes.
Good.
If, if there's, if it's in writing, right?
Right.
It would be in the, it would be in the agreement. Normally what happens is we get cash.
It's in the bonding agreement.
It's in the bonding.
So someone's going to make a note here that in the bonding agreement, it'll say, along with the as-built, there shall be a report letter, call it what you will, from a certified arborist regarding the planting that was conducted.
Right.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay. And you had a second item, or that was it?
No, I think that was it.
Okay, I saw your email, it had two, that's why.
Yeah, so with that, if I could, that leaves like two items, two or three items left. So is anyone, do you have it to be able to put it on the screen?
Yes.
Is the redlined one? I don't even know.
It's easier if you put George's, because yours was clean.
Oh, no, I had, I had redlined, redlined it.
So, okay, so the one after your email in here has.
I have two of them.
So the, so yours is the second one and Barry's.
Yeah, it's better to use George's, because there's less, and some of the things that I had originally recommended are different.
Can, can you, can somebody email me this version? I, I can't be like digging around on my email right now.
So my email, July 2nd.
Okay, I'm going to find it here and then email it to myself, so it's at the top.
Oh, this has to be the second one, right?
He didn't send it to you, he just sent it to me.
Oh, really?
No, 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 I think, I think I sent it to both of you.
Okay, let me see.
Yeah, he, he did, yes, he did. Eight thirty AM.
This might be easier, if I email you what I sent, George, with most of the amendments that we agreed on accepted. We can work from there.
So I find this on the packet on page eighty-two.
It's in the packet?
This is a one on the second.
Yes, you have two in the packet.
July 2nd, yeah.
July 2nd, it is your email.
Okay.
And it basically says I've incorporated.
I've incorporated, yeah, please revise my client does not agree to these edits and attached as a version that we would agree with. And then two, two pages later is the.
What page, Justin?
This is page eighty-two.
Thank you very much.
And if you just get an email from me, check that out.
And while you're doing that, I just want to say we had received some additional correspondence. One from Bob in Erna Place, nine fourteen South Street, and from Barbara and Reg Foster from eight ninety-eight South Street.
So what you sent me, Barry, is different than this?
It accepts a lot of these, so take an email I just sent you. Right, perfect. That includes all the stuff we agreed on as without redlining. You can check it, but you got, so. So this first page has everything that we had done and agreed, including comments from town council, I think there's one comment. So if you scroll to page two, or three, there it is. Oh.
What page?
Doesn't your, can you click on, how do you show redlining? It doesn't show the, is your system automatically accept edits or not show them?
I thought you said that that's what you sent her was.
No, I did, but it has redlining, so it's odd that it's not.
The packet has the, the red lines.
This was the, just sent it to.
That's, that's George's, so this is, this is apparently a.
Sometimes when you open in one.
I have two different ones with two different red lines.
There was, there was originally Barry's.
Unfortunately, this computer doesn't have the Microsoft license.
That's okay, so still go to the one that I said.
Okay. If you know what I'm supposed to do to get it, feel free to tell me, but right now, when it tries to open word, it goes on me.
I got you.
Lockdown.
Okay, so.
If you go back, exit in the top layer, that unbox itself, up above.
No, I've tried to log into this before, I don't think it's going to work.
We all have our computers, can we just have a email to us?
Or we can just use George's and just be like, I was.
Yeah, this doesn't work with redlining.
Yeah.
So why don't we just use George's and then?
So, page eighty-two. You're saying that all of these red lines have been accepted, and then you're going to mention something else?
We can scroll through them, it'll be easy.
I'm seeing a comment by Chris Heath.
Right, that's.
That there should be a reference to an actual specific plan, and it's not there yet.
So if you write, if you.
I'm just, I need to share my screen. Here we go.
So can you look on that while you're sharing?
No, this is PDF.
Well, just, just to let you know, so all those redlined edits, they are all agreed upon.
Okay, great.
Chris's comment comes out, this is agreed upon.
Great.
We had agreed on that, it's on that page. So on that one, you go up to the top where there's an edit. We would recommend where it says proposed landscaping. So whereas on blank date, the owner submit the board revision of the proposed grading plan sheet by showing in pertinent part proposed landscaping, we would recommend with twenty-five trees of specified species and size. And then after the word planting strip, one hundred feet long. Because that reflects what's on the plan, but at least then it's in the covenant, mirroring what's on the plan. You have a problem with that?
I don't, I don't have an objection generally with that.
Okay. So that, I can give you that language or, you know. All it does is it adds the number of trees saying what's specified as size and species on the plan. And then it says within a hundred and fifty feet, which is true on the plan, but it just states it here in the covenant. That was one.
Do you have any objections to that?
No, it sounds reasonable to me.
Then given what we just discussed, before the whereas the declaration set forth herein, you could insert, thinking on our feet here, whereas the absence of a fence shown on the approved buffer plan shall not prohibit. You know, that's probably a good place for the recital about that.
I, I'd actually rather put it down in the main body, rather than the whereas, but.
That's fine. So then in the numbered paragraphs, we wanted to put in, and this is a question we haven't talked about, but something about in the next growing season, following the board's approval of the approved buffer plan. So that's a question of timing as to when these trees would be planted. Which gets to the, how long does the applicant have, how long does Brian have to finish the work here? If there's a deadline or.
I thought there was a deadline, or there was a mention somewhere of fall.
About the fall, yeah, I saw that too.
Yeah, so.
That came up.
Yeah, so that, well, the, the intention and the hope is to install them in fall. But that is subject to.
To grading.
Site conditions and the grading, because obviously the grading has to be done in that area to be able to put them in. And more importantly, it's also subject to water, which, which I'm less, I'm less concerned about that now. Because the town is actively involved in doing the waterline work on South Street. But even though I'm less concerned about it, I'm still concerned about it.
So here's, here's our question. Without some language in here, the question is, when will this be first planted, right? So we're looking for some kind of a deadline on, on being planted, created and planted. So if it's not, and we all know the best time to plant this is going to be fall or spring, right? So it's, if it's not this fall.
Should be next spring.
Should be in the spring.
So how would you address that?
Is any year of the plan, of the, you know, approval of the plan or something like that, within a?
Yeah, so, so two comments. One, I still would prefer not to put that sort of a thing in this document.
Yeah.
But I'm fine with putting it in the covenant, the subdivision covenant. And then it has to be subject to availability of water and, you know, racks of God and all that kind of normal stuff that we would normally put in.
But is it, is there any reason to anticipate if not plant this fall?
Assuming, assuming that the, assuming the waterline work is done and, you know, nothing absolutely insane happens, then yes, you would expect either this fall or by the spring.
How long is the water going to take to be installed?
It's not just a matter of the water, it's, it has to be a whole irrigation system, which requires an individual domestic house meter and a water meter for that. So that's subject to when the house is completed to get, that's, there's like a bunch of steps that have to happen. The water line's coming up the street, it's just like a raw water line that will feed like a fire hydrant.
Right.
Which we could potentially use for dust and some things like that, but effectively irrigate it, it's going to be, you know, when the house is complete and that system's installed.
And of, and of course, the town's going to want to make sure that they know how much water is getting used so that they can get paid for it.
That's, that sounds like a lot of waiting when you could bring in a temporary storage tank of two thousand gallons or whatever. And these kinds of trees, you're not watering them every day. They're too big to put water bags on, they're not, you know, realms, but you, these could be watered without there being water for the whole subdivision. Right, we, we would just appreciate that there'd be a condition somewhere, if it's not in this covenant, in the master covenant that you were talking about, that it needed to be this fall or next spring.
Madam, Madam Chair, may I speak? Madam Chair.
Sir, Artie.
So a lot of this also has to do with the fact that the grading, the site has to be prepped for this, this to occur. I mean, there's prep work going on, there's grading for the foundation going on. And I, I mean, I understand, I mean, I can appreciate the neighbors wanting these trees in there, I, I really can. But the, but there's also a priority in making sure that they take and do not fail. And which, and so I think there's some, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, I guess is what I'm getting at. The, the, the grading has to be done to the property, water has to be brought in, and plantings have to be done. I understand that they want to hide, hide what's going on, I can appreciate that. But are we trying to put the cart before the horse, trying to force these in here now versus let's, maybe put some type of town table on there? But I don't, I don't, the house is not going to, I don't think this is going to be, the house is not going to be built by next spring, having a meter on it. I, I don't see that happening at all, maybe it could, but it seems like we're trying to put the cart before the horse because of, via some visual things going on, and I can appreciate that, but there's also visual things going on because of dust. And I don't know where the water's coming in, but I, it just sounds like, maybe we should, we should put a deadline on there, but I don't think we should put a deadline on there, this fall or next spring. Again, I could be wrong, but it sounds like we're forcing this because of visuals versus maybe what's, what's really right for the project and what's right for the trees and when they're put in.
Thanks, Artie.
I just think there's, there's, you know, the petition's putting significant amount of, of resources into this, and you don't want to screw this up, just because it's in a covenant saying that it has to be in the ground by, you know, X amount of day, you know, whatever, just to comply with that, so they don't have to fall out of compliance. I don't think we should necessarily have a, a provision to say it needs to be in the ground by, or, you know, that needs to be started by fall or spring. I, I just, I think that there are so many variables and I, to this whole thing, that we, I don't think we should add an element that, you know, is, it would, would cause a complexity.
So what, what would be the current deadline under your subdivision's approval or endorsement for when this, this subdivision, all the grading and work, not the building of the house, but when would that have to be done? Is there?
Well, subdivision has to be complete within, according to the decision, within two years of the execution of the plan. And when the lots are released, there'll be a performance bond that's put in place. And then when those two years tick by, if the thing isn't done, we'll, we'll be asking you why it's not done.
So. So when is the two years starting?
Starts from the endorsement of the plan.
Which was last year?
Which we have, has not happened.
No, which I haven't done, because it is. So let's say you endorse it now, now it's July, August-ish, twenty twenty-six. So the grading and all that, in theory, should be done within those two years, so there's four growing seasons in there. So the grading and all that, in theory, should be done within those two years, and there's four growing seasons in there. Can they get an extension?
They could get an extension if they ask for an extension, but the, the planning board would, would have the discretion to do that.
So this could not happen for a couple of years, just say no.
And I, I will say, I mean, there is, there is an incentive too, because Brian's gonna have to post a bond to get his lot releases. And then that cash will be sitting, and in order to get that cash back, he's gonna have to finish everything. So there's a sort of a built-in mechanism to, for him to wanna get everything done to get his cash back.
And this landscape, this, this plan and landscaping includes this drainage swale, so that, that, whatever he's doing up, he wants that stormwater management. We're fine with not putting it in the covenant here, but again, for the, we hope that you'll put something in your endorsement or master covenant that at least notes that the goal is to have this landscaping and. Grading plan implemented within the two years or something. That, so forget an edit there. Paragraph one.
Is this related specifically to this? Okay.
Place, like fourteen South Street on the other side.
You gotta talk to the mic.
You have to speak to the mic so the TV can hear you.
And I wanted to also introduce our counsel. He's on, he's on Zoom.
Should I bring him over?
So.
Yeah, you should bring him over.
So I just wanted to highlight that in my conversations with Brian relative to water, what I have proposed for our side is, is that he has access to our water system for up to two and a half years until, until.
So it's established?
Until twenty twenty-five, oh, sorry, for two and a half years from now, so the end of twenty-six. So, but that the plantings would go in, you know, by the end of May of next year. So, so that we provide the water, and the, the plantings go in in a reasonable timeframe. And I had thought that in our conversations that we were pretty much in agreement on that timing. So I just wanted to highlight that for, for your conversations.
I actually would like to add that even before I was talking to the applicant about the water providing from our side as well, it just didn't go there, so I have no problem with this. Because honestly, the way it has been going on for now, already for thirty-three years into the project, and, I mean, it's supposed to be approved to last August, and we are right now in July, still talking about it. I have no problem as well as I told to the applicant before to provide water, but I would like to have some deadline after all this. You see how long it takes? So have some certainty or clarity of what's gonna happen there, because I used to build myself, so I know development as well. There, again, I will provide water if the planting would go together with my neighbor. There's no problem for this.
Hold on, Sarah, hold on.
Yeah, and excuse me one second. Do we have anything to do with water? I mean, we're talking about water. This is like, this is like the fourth time we've had you come and talk about water and plants and all this. What is our purview? Because if we're gonna be here for two more hours talking about water, I don't think that that is the purview of the planning board.
Well, I mean, our jurisdiction is the subdivision. What kind of private arrangements they make to water the plants is between them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want, we've spent four meetings on plantings and where we were worth listening, but you should have to resolve this before you came to talk to us, is what I'm thinking about the water, right? I mean.
It's all, Madam Chair, I think initially one of the discussions about water was regarding dust, and that was, that was why public health was involved.
And that was fine, but this is not. This is how we're establishing trees and blah, blah, blah. I mean, can we, can we talk about our decision and then? I don't know, am I being unrealistic and thinking that you need to resolve the water on your own as long as?
Your requirement was that there'd be a buffer strip with landscaping.
Correct.
Their response as the applicant was, well, that's something that has to wait because we can't maintain the landscaping without water. So that's, they're using the water as an excuse. We're not.
I understand, but so they need to have the landscape done. You have two years is what I'm understanding, and then we could grant an extension. So if you water it or he waters it, whoever waters it is, 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 is between you. I mean, it feels like we don't have anything to do with the water. We just wanna make sure that the plantings go in correctly, that they, that, that you do it within the allotted time, that, I mean, because we could be here all night talking about who's gonna water the plants, right? I don't mean to be simplistic, but.
There were two things. We were, the gentleman who spoke.
Artie, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Hold on a second. They're, they're gonna get to the east side later.
I agree, I just.
You're interrupting our resolving our issues, so hold on if you would. The correct point that Artie made, the gentleman made, was that on this side, on the west side, there's some land, there's some grading that has to happen. I don't know what's on the east side, if planting over there has to wait for grading. So if the grading of the lot two is not gonna be finished with the swale, which is, has to be done properly, you wanna get that in, let that set up and so forth before you start messing with it. I get that, and so we're fine with the covenant for the whole thing required. Planting has to happen in those two years because of the grading. When you speak about the east side, you can speak about what that gentleman's raising and the whole water thing, okay?
And I appreciate it. You're frustrated, you want it to occur, you wanna know the timeline.
But we accept that.
So I, I understand.
Very valid point that the grading of that swale is more, as important as the plant. So we're good with no additional language at the beginning of paragraph one. And the language that I had proposed, it sent to George, it had about the certified arborist giving a report. We already talked about moving that to something else, so. The only other thing would be at the end of paragraph three, after, this is the paragraph that says, "The owner and all future owners of Lot Two would be obligated to maintain this by maintaining and restoring the condition, including," paraphrasing, "replacing any dead or diseased trees, specimens of the same size and species." We would propose adding, "If the owner or any future owner of Lot Two seeks to change the variety or number of trees in the buffer during replacement of any dead or diseased trees, they must work with the owner of the abutting property of thirty-one Marant to reach agreement on such changes." So if in ten years, two dead Cooperinas and Brian or the owner of Lot Two says, "I'd rather replace those with, pick a species, or I think these have grown in large enough, and that may be why that one didn't live. Do you mind if I don't replace it?" The owner of thirty-one, if it's Sergey or if it's a new owner, they can agree with. Why would you have an objection to that in a covenant like this?
Yeah.
Look, I can breathe about.
Two, two reasons. Number one, because I look at this covenant as, as related to the subdivision and the planning board, not so much as a private matter between parties. So if you, if we wanted to put in something that said it would have to go back to the board and the, and the neighborhood have input, I suppose that I would not have an objection there, but I'd wanna tie it back to the, to the.
I was trying to save the trouble of coming to the board.
Yeah, so.
If that's how you prefer, that makes sense.
And the reason for that as well is, my second one is, it's essentially a form of an indefinite reference in that it's, by, by leaving it that way.
Don't go on law school on this, George.
Wait, 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 but what it says now is that subs- subsequent replacements are going to be the same size and species.
Right.
So they can't change the species without coming back to us.
I was trying to give them some flexibility at working with the neighbor, but.
In which case, the neighbor has the right to.
If we wanna add something.
I was trying to, I'm trying to be nice.
If, if we wanna add something in, you know, without.
But you're a lawyer, why do you wanna do that?
Trying to make neighbors get along.
Without, you know, add something except, you know, with further review by the board and consultation with the, the adjacent owner. That would be fine. I would, I would not.
Second thought, I appreciate Mr. Alfred's point. Same species and size. If you want relief from that, the owner in the future will come back. I was trying to provide a relief valve of them talking, but you know what? It's more trouble than it's worth. With that said, then, the only change would be in that whereas at the top about the number of trees and the hundred and fifty feet, which you know about.
Okay.
And then the other two that I had proposed, we go in the other thing, and we have that on there.
Okay, so we have an agreement. Everyone's, this group is happy at the moment, and we'll get back.
No, that.
Can't wait to, I can't wait till you get water, and I can't wait till the trees are up.
Thank you for your patience on this, but it's been worked out.
And I'm sorry, but it's just, it comes to a point where this is taking more time than, than public hearings that, you know, are related to planning, more to planning than to this, so. Okay, so with that, is there a motion?
Okay, so we need two motions, I guess. One is, I move that we approve the landscape plan as presented to us tonight and as agreed in our conversations tonight.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
You second it? Adam, okay.
And I move that we approve the. I gotta find it again. It's on page eighty-two, you said? Let me get to page eighty-two.
Yes, eighty-two.
I can reference it exactly. I move that we approve the buffer plant, buffer planting strip covenant and restriction as presented to us tonight, as agreed between the parties. And as presented to us tonight with the one change as agreed to tonight.
Second.
We have two seconds.
That was a third.
Artie won a second or two. Okay, so with that, Paul needs the motions, and Justin and Adam.
Can we vote them?
So can we vote them together?
Together?
No, we'll vote them separately. Let's just get this done. Okay, so on the first motion, Adam.
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I, the chair. So that's for the first motion. The second motion, Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so all eyes, so it's all approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. You need to have a block party and make everyone happy. So thank you. So now let's talk about the east side, which is not part of the decision, but it was a gesture to.
Yeah.
For equity.
This would be a request to open or to modify.
Hopefully they've reached an agreement.
Right.
Have you reached an agreement so that we don't have to open this?
Well, two, two things. I, I think, I don't, I don't know that it's a finalized agreement, but let the.
Let's introduce Evans Huber to the proceeding so that he's in here.
Evans, can you introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you. My name is Evans Huber. I'm counsel for Robert Place, a butter to this project.
So who would like to?
All right, so I, I understand that there's been some very good dialogue that's taken place. I think there's some, some agreements in principle. I'm not sure if all, every detail has been worked out, if it's a hundred percent buttoned up, buttoned down and ironed out. But I would say that I, on behalf of Brian, would not wanna see the subdivision reopened and basically re-advertised, re, you know, I would rather not see that process, because that's the only way the board can amend the subdivision, is to go through basically a full process.
Correct.
So I'd rather not see that. And I would rather that the parties iron out the details and make it work, and it does seem like it's headed in that direction. One thought I wanted to put out there in that regard is that because this is not a part of the subdivision, it's technically not a part of sort of the board's general purview. However, I know the board wants to see it resolved. I know Brian wants to see it resolved, because he's gonna be living there, and he doesn't wanna basically be on bad terms with his neighbors when he's actually there. So, so one mechanism that the board will have, and I already mentioned this earlier, but one mechanism the board will have is Brian's gonna have to post a bond to get lot releases. The issuance of the lot releases is to some degree discretionary and certainly, certainly with respect to occupancy. I know it's been done in the past where occupancy has been withheld for conditions, so the board does still have some little bit of. Even though it's not, this isn't actually a part of that review.
I don't know, George. I don't know, George. If it's not formally in the decision, I don't know that we can deny the occupancy permit. If the landscaping on the east side, as agreed between the parties, is not done to the satisfaction of the neighbor, he comes in and says, well, George Junta said that you can withhold the occupancy permit. And you come back and you say, but it's not a condition of the subdivision plan that this be done, and therefore you have to give us an occupancy permit. I'm uncomfortable with that, George. Evans, am I taking away your fire?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm physically and electronically raising my hand.
Yes.
Yes, we see you, please.
Uh, thank you. So my question for the board would be, I mean, speaking with my client, my understanding is that he and the applicant are making progress towards an agreement. They walk the property, they put flags in agreed-upon locations where trees are gonna go, so it's definitely progress. My question would be, let's say they actually reach an agreement, and, you know, it's certainly looking positive. What authority do you believe the board has, if any, to enforce that agreement?
If we don't modify the subdivision plan, we don't.
Yes, and this didn't come up during the, you know, during the hearing before.
Right, it didn't come up, and Adam, you were a little faint there, so it didn't, Adam said it didn't come up in the hearing before, so.
You know, the question is, I mean, we, we've been, if I may, we've been doing things on special permit side, sometimes on what we call minor modifications. And the question is, can we do a minor modification on a, an amendment to a subdivision plan?
I've never done that.
That's not the question. Isn't it that we ever done it? The question is.
Well, I, I guess, I, I guess my question then would be, I, I mean, this, obviously, is the first time I'm appearing before the board on this matter. I wasn't here in June. But it's, but it's my clear understanding that the board wants to see my client and the applicant reach an agreement on this subject. And I guess my, what I'm wondering is, how did the board envision this playing out, assuming the parties could reach an agreement?
We, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure that we ever got to that point, Evans, but it sounds to me like what I was thinking of as tonight's meeting got started was that. We would ask the applicant to come to us. I, I, I don't know whether, whether you and your client have the authority to do this, or whether it has to be from the applicant, to. Come in with an application to amend the subdivision plan to include a landscape. Plan that, that shows landscaping for the, for the east side as, as agreed between the parties.
Well, that, that sounds, that sounds great to me if, if the applicant is willing to do that. I mean, if, it seems to me, you know, that if my client is reporting to me that the, he and the applicant are walking the property, reaching agreement in principle, my client reports to me that the applicant seems to wanna reach an agreement on this. And is acting in good faith, so let's hope that that is the case and continues to be the case. And, you know, right now, it seems to me like, have the, my client and the applicant having reached agreement on location of trees and put little flags in the ground where those are gonna go, it's not that much of an ask to have, you know, a landscape professional prepare a plan that shows where these are gonna go. And then the applicant comes in and says what you just said, Paul, I'd like to, you know, amend my subdivision plan approval to include this landscape plan. I'm hoping that that's what can happen here.
I understand your concern, George, because, you know, it, it means a filing fee, which is not insignificant, but, well, maybe somewhat insignificant, but it, it's there.
Can we waive it?
It involves, it, it, it involves publication. It involves serving certain neighbors. I don't know how far, I mean, South Street's a pretty long street, and you only go three hundred feet, I believe. But, you know, but I don't, I don't know who would actually come in to complain about a landscape plan being added to the subdivision.
So here's, here's my, my take on it. It would require basically reopening everything, and I, for one, am not keen on that idea generally, especially since we could accomplish the same thing as a private matter. So assuming the parties come to an agreement on what trees go where, we have a, a plan done up, the parties can enter into a private agreement, a recordable document that gets recorded at the registry of deeds, and becomes binding and effective. And I think it accomplishes the same exact goal without having to go through a full subdivision process. the same exact goal without having to go through a full subdivision process. My preference, I would much rather handle it that way than have to go through a whole advertised hearing and make it a part of the subdivision.
So you think that if, if there's an application to the board that specifically says to amend the agreement to approve this subdivision, to approve this landscaping plan, that that opens up the entire previously approved subdivision?
It's a subdivision modification, and it therefore becomes a, a notice, advertised notice hearing on the subdivision, and everything is in play. Has to go through all the departments, has to go through all the review.
I, I just, Alice called my attention to something that I didn't remember.
That's why she's here. That's why she's here.
Which, it was really, though, issues not quite at this level. So we did do, like a de minimis change in the subdivision, actually. We did it for the subdivision on Central Avenue, we changed the street name, and we did it for Rockwood Lane, where we did a substitution of lawn for some landscaping materials, and we called it, but it was, we didn't do a formal amendment. We did grab it that way. Whether it was legal or not when we did it was another issue, but...
Well...
I mean, we called it, an amended certificate of action, a de minimis, got me this far away, sorry, um, on a definitive subdivision approval. And we called it, was certainly, a de minimis amendment to a definitive subdivision plan is how we did it.
So that's an option, is what you're saying.
Which had no hearing notice or anything.
I, I would be...
On the street name and substituting lawn for, for tree, so it wasn't at this level. I mean...
I, I would certainly, if it's something that can be handled that way, I would be open to considering it. I'm not, at this moment, I'm not gonna say I'd, I'd agree to that, but I would be, I'd be open to consider it because I think that, I think that would address a lot of my concerns about having a full process, if that's something that the board thinks is doable, and Mr. Place and attorney Huber, oh, if everybody kind of agrees that we do it that way, I, I might, that might work. Ken, that, I mean, is that small enough? I mean, it's a whole landscape change and probably has requirements for trees lasting certain periods of time, and, you know, I mean, that's not de minimis.
All right. We discussed this before, we discussed this before in open meetings, I believe. We've done de minimis changes, and there has always been a question, even on the special permit process, as to whether that's even really allowed. We've been doing it. If, I, I, by hearsay evidence, I'm told this goes back to Dever Baylen, being on the board, questioning whether we really have the authority to do de minimis changes, which is what we've been doing. I personally think, and I don't know how, how, how quickly you're gonna get this done, but I'm only here until next April. But if I'm still...
My, my sense, my sense, Paul, is that if the, my, my sense is that if the parties are gonna reach an agreement on this, it's gonna be pretty quick, like within the next month.
Yeah. So, you know, I would certainly vote to consider it a de minimis change. I mean, what, what we do is we first take a vote to consider the application as a de minimis change, and we vote that. Then we do, then we have the meeting, this is not a hearing, we have the meeting on the de minimis change and we approve it. So I've got no problem with landscaping being considered de minimis.
I think Adam also wants to say...
In, in, in this case, I mean, the reason we're trying to avoid, as George was saying, the requirement to re-notice a whole thing, and there's only one other party that's affected at all by the, any kind of improvements and so on along the eastern edge, and it sounds like both parties are diligently pursuing it, and it really only affects those two parties. So on that basis, I think Paul is right, we can look at this as a de minimis, it comes on the agenda. If Evans, you and your client are unsatisfied, I think you'll have an opportunity to speak to it at that point. But I think otherwise, you know, we would, if you guys are resolved between the parties, then we'll, uh, you know, we'll vote it as a de minimis change. Right, I mean, I would think, well, so first of all, thank you for that comment, but I would think that the way this is gonna play out is, my client and the applicant are either gonna reach an agreement or they won't. If they reach an agreement on, and, and they, again, they certainly seem to be heading in that direction. If they reach an agreement that is reducible to a, you know, paper landscape plan that can be presented to the board and the applicant agrees to come in and seek a de minimis change, then my client's not gonna have anything negative to say about it because it's gonna be a plan that he's approved. If, if they don't reach agreement and the, or the applicant says, you know what, I've changed my mind, I'm not putting these in, then this issue is not gonna be before the board, we're gonna have to resolve it some other way.
Bob, is there a reason that you see that we couldn't, if we come to an agreement to this between the two attorneys and have similar private agreements of...
You know, if, if the two attorneys agree, if the two attorneys agree to just do it as a private agreement, do it as a private agreement.
Is there any?
What we don't know doesn't hurt us. You know, it's, neighbors can have private agreements for anything at all.
Just to not overcomplicate everything and estimate in time, I think.
You know, the, the, the question is...
If that works.
The, the question is, I'm sorry, forget your name, Bob. The, the question is, are Bob and Evans going to want the planning board to stamp it or not?
We would, we would, obviously, we would rather have the imprimatur of the planning board behind this.
Let's be you guys, let's be you guys to work out.
Yeah, you two to work out and, but, but...
And if you decide, and if you and Evans, if, if George and Evans decide that they're fine with a private agreement that's legally binding, that if, if you don't do it, Bob can haul you into Norfolk Superior Court to enforce the agreement without getting planning board approval, fine, that's, that's between the lawyers, but they can, they can work that out. My only question procedurally is, if they do come to us with a landscaping plan, are we gonna want Ed Olson to bless it before we approve it?
If they resolve what they want, why, well, if they've agreed on it, I mean, we could ask Ed his comments on it, but I think if they've agreed on it and everybody's happy...
Well, it's just that we're stamping it. Because, because we're stamping it, we're...
Well, that's only if we stamp it, if we, if they do it privately.
Oh, if they do it privately, no, no, no.
We could ask Ed for his comments.
They can do whatever they want privately.
We could ask Ed to comment on the landscaping plan, and maybe he'd make some recommendations so we would accept, and maybe he'd make some recommendations we wouldn't accept, so we can have him look at it.
But if they agreed on it together, why does that have to review it?
Just a question of if, if we're blessing it, if they come to us and say we want the planning board to bless it.
Paul, Paul, we can just comment, we can add, we can accept him or not accept him.
Right, our, our town expert can, can review. Okay, I understand what you're saying, okay.
So, all right, so it sounds to me like George and I need to be in touch with one or another as to how...
Evans, can you hold on one second, please?
Evans, hold on a second, please. Just from a process perspective, if you put on your agenda the, the applicant submitting this proposal, and, and there's a defined time for that to occur, does that then, what happens then relative to, you don't, you're not making a decision, all you're doing is voting to have the applicant submit something within a given timeframe?
Do you talk about the de minimis change if that's the way that you go?
Well, you would file the de minimis change.
He has to file the de minimis.
You would file the de minimis change and then we would schedule it on an agenda.
Right.
For the next meeting that we have.
For the next meeting we have, and we would get the comments.
We don't publish it, we don't serve it on the neighbors because it's not, it's not an amendment.
Not a public hearing.
We just put it on the agenda.
But if you voted, if you voted now to request him to do so, and then he comes...
We wanna leave it to the attorneys to see what they want to work out. They're trying to...
Because we don't have an...
Yeah, I don't think that we're, we can really just then request that he submit a de minimis request.
No, he has to submit it.
It's, yeah, on his own. I mean, that has to come from there because there, there, this is outside the...
Well, there's no recourse that we have.
The current decision.
It has to come through the applicant.
Well, well, yeah, in terms of coming to us, yes.
What we're saying is that there's an opportu, there's an avenue, if that's the way that both parties decide to, to pursue it.
You don't have to come to us, this is what we've been discussing.
I appreciate that.
Which we didn't know we had an avenue until right now, until we saw, so.
So basically, to summarize, which people tell me I talk too much, there are three ways that we can go. You work out an agreement and you never come back to us, you just have a, a contract between the two of you that the lawyers have worked out and the lawyers are happy that both sides are protected contractually.
Right.
Second is, on the other side, you come to us with an amendment to the decision, which is the whole legal process that right now George wants to avoid, and I understand why, but that, but you may say, but, but we want to know that it's legal and it's binding, and so we want you to do it that way. And the third way is the middle ground, which is you come to us with, we've reached an agreement, we just want you to approve it as a de minimis change, which we've done before, we can, we're, we're comfortable doing it.
Right.
Evans has to decide, Evans and George have to decide which, which way they're comfortable advising their clients to go. It's always the client's decision, in my practice, it's the client's decision, not the lawyer's decision.
Excuse me, one second. Artie, is your hand up or is it from before?
Yes, no, it's up. Yeah, actually, yeah, no, I just wanted to say that I agree this is de minimis change. I, in some ways, my preferences is, I know, Evans, you had said this, and I think Bob, that's made perhaps your preference as well, that, I mean, I think it would be, it would be good to have the boards, to have it come before the board is de minimis change and have us say, yeah, you know, type of thing. We're likely gonna say, we're gonna say yes because you guys are coming before us with an agreement in hand. We spent all this, we spent all this time talking about this, opening this up, as, which I think was the right thing to do, opening it up, saying, you know, hey, east side, we need to deal with that. So I think it would be good if you guys, in fairly short order, come back before us with a de minimis change, and George, I understand why you don't want to open it up, de minimis change.
Yeah, but, yeah, excuse me, I don't think we can advise them on how they should proceed, so I just want to make sure.
No, we're not, we're just, we're...
That's your preference, right.
Everyone's talking, yeah, preference, that's all. And I know, George, you were saying that you don't want to open the whole thing up, and I don't see, I mean, I don't, I, I see whatever we can to minimize any cost coming before us because you guys are agreeing what you're gonna do. And I would like this, personally, I'd like to see it, give us, to have a de minimis change come before us. If it does, it does, if it doesn't, it doesn't. You guys agree to it, but I'd like to get this thing off the books without any, without anything future coming back to us for whatever, whatever reason, or even going with courts. And I think if it's come back with de minimis change, I think that's, that settles things a lot, a lot, a lot stronger than not. That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Adam, I think maybe...
No, I just wanted to say that, that was just, that was an opinion of just a member of the board.
Right, that was an opinion of...
Not the opinion of the board, speaking as Artie Rockman's...
Yes, yes, yeah, Justin, that's all, all of this is an opinion of all of us, as opposed to all the options that are going on. It's my opinion of what I think, what I think would be a nice, would have, the right thing, the right direction to go. It's always an opinion.
Thanks, Artie. Okay, Adam?
Hi, I see Evans' hand up. I'm just gonna say, like, it's eight forty-five, we've been dealing with this issue, I think, long enough, I think it's between the parties to resolve. Paul has laid out a summary of different options and how this can proceed. It reflects, you know, it reflects the board's position, like, let's move on.
Yeah, I agree.
Second.
So Evans, you have your hand up.
Yeah, last thing.
Last comment.
All I wanted to express was my appreciation for the fact that board members are clearly trying to lend their support to a resolution of this matter that's enforceable, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You put the nail on the head, Evans.
So with that, thank you very much, I think, you know, it's...
The parties will talk and I'll be in touch with the others.
The parties will talk, okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, so moving on, um, the Board of Appeals, right? We have two items, twenty Alderbrook Lane, it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and it seems like there's most likely no comment on that application is what...
I, I'm...
But, but, but unless you feel...
Are you ready to have me move no comment, or, you know?
Well, I just wanted to see if any of, if Artie or Adam or Justin had any questions, but it seems like it's pretty straightforward, and I don't think we should have a comment on that particular one, but it's, but if you, anyone feels differently, please let us know. No?
Nope. I move, I move that we make no comment.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Paul, second by Justin, let's take a vote. Artie?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I, the chair, so, it's unanimous, and the motion carries. So the second one is two seventy-seven Brookline Avenue, which, Lee had some questions for the building commissioner.
Um, I just wanted to, I just wanted to verify what historical practices had been on cases like this, and so I, I, I think I would probably recommend no comment on this. This is a situation where there was a variance that was issued on a two, to enable a two-family to be built based upon what the specific plan presented, and so now they want to tear that house down, that structure down and put up a new one, so I think it's totally really the determination of, of the Board of Appeals as to whether or not they're gonna confine them to that, um, structure that was originally permitted or enabled the variance to be extended to a new construction situation.
You know, I, I'm comfortable leaving it up to the Board of Appeals to determine what they want to do about their variance.
Right, right.
So I move no comment.
Second.
Any questions or comments? So with that, let's take a vote. Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I, the chair, so the motion carries, no comment on both of the Board of Appeals. So thank you all for that. We have meeting minutes, we have September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, May fourteenth, and June fourth. So do we have any, let's start with the September eleventh, that was, those were meeting minutes that were done by the select board, is that correct?
Yeah, and it totally escaped me because it was a joint meeting, so I didn't get anything from Donna, and they didn't share it with me proactively through the select board.
So what else is new?
And it only came up when Chris Heath was doing, gathering information for something totally unrelated, so they're in front of me now. And I only have a PDF, so I hope you don't have any change.
I vote, I move that we approve the minutes of the joint meeting with the select board on September...
It's September eleventh.
September eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Who seconded? Adam?
Second.
Okay, so Paul, a motion in place, and Adam seconded. Let's take, any questions? Let's take a vote. Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
He's quiet.
No, he's...
Aye, aye, sorry.
Okay. Paul?
Aye.
Justin?
abstained.
You're right, you were not at the meeting, and so I vote aye, so the motion carries and the meeting, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, meeting minutes are approved. May fourteenth, next meeting minutes, any comments on them? I have, I have one comment, the, on page four, on the last paragraph, it says, missed a spot, I handed out Nwari paperwork, I just wanted to put it's the code of conduct rather than just plain Nwari.
Page four where?
Page four, the last...
Oh, I see, Nwari, Code of Conduct paperwork?
Yes.
Okay.
Nwari recommended.
Why don't you take out the word paperwork? I think Nwari Code of Conduct.
Sure. I just, it just, Nwari paperwork just seemed random a little bit. That was my only question. Any comments? Artie, Adam? Nope.
I had none.
I didn't either.
Maybe it's Jean in the attendant, I'm kidding.
You can't bring her back.
I know, I know. Okay, so with that...
We, we could, we, we could ask her to advise us. We, we could, we, we could ask her to advise us.
With that, let's take a vote. This is for the May fourteen.
So I move that we approve the May fourteenth minutes with the one change that was just discussed.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Paul, second by Justin. Any questions? Let's take a vote. Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
An aye, the chair, so motion carries and May fourteenth is approved. June fourth. Any questions on June fourth? I, I have one small one. About on page two, on the top paragraph. The third line, it says that I stated that the window does not seem to meet the same elevation as the current. I would say the same windowsill elevation as the current. That's the only, that's the only comment I had.
Still does not got it. Yes.
And that's, that's the only thing I had. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
June fourth, we have meeting minutes.
Okay, so Justin, motion and second by Paul. Any questions? So let's take a vote. Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Aye, the chair, so the motion carries and it's unanimous, so the June fourth is also approved, so.
That's it.
I think that's it for the meeting minutes, and then report from Planning Director and Board Members.
Okay, I'll go first. Just to remind everybody, we have a meeting scheduled for next Monday. And really, the focus of the meeting is to kind of go through the MBTA zoning, so we're familiar with it, you're familiar with it, so the packet is, I think, up now and the agenda is out. But essentially, I think that my goal was to kind of go through the zoning, give you guys a refresher reminder of what the parameters of the zoning are as it came out of home for the base plan and the neighborhood plan. And secondly, then, to invite Chris Heap in to go through the site plan approval process that would be implemented under this protocol, and how it differs from the site plan approval that you're, that you've normally done with major projects and what your jurisdiction is in this circumstance. And thirdly, I've invited Tim Sullivan, and he's done a red line markup of the zoning to talk about the changes he specifically liked to see in the draft.
For one hundred West.
For one hundred West. And finally, we received some comments back from the AG, and luckily, they're, they're pretty minor. There, there's, there are technical changes or clarifications that she's suggesting we make, which is encouraging. I think it means that we put together a pretty good zoning framework. And so Chris is going to walk you through what those comments are that we got from her. And so my goal is to kind of get to a place where we're able to take the comments we have from one hundred West, the comments we have from the AG, and reflect them in a draft that's kind of our foundational piece, so that when we hear from the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs by the beginning of the month, we'll be able to just focus on incorporating their comments or addressing their comments, and so the lift won't be so heavy because we have to revise that zoning and get it advertised in, in August for a September public hearing.
Now, this meeting Monday is totally Zoom or?
Yes, totally Zoom.
So I have to be.
I have a question, Lee.
Sure.
Are you proposing that we would effectively have like a two-step internal process, one, that we would resolve and tacitly approve tomorrow night, oh, not torn night, Monday night? The proposed changes from the AG's office and the, and Tim Sullivan? And then, and then we're only just waiting on comments from the other state agency? And then we would kind of merge everything together and start the hearing process in August?
No, we would, well, we would start the hearing process by, because by sending the, the article to the select board, right, and.
Right, of course, of course. Right, but that's, okay.
I didn't want to let everything wait until the meeting in, you know, in August. I just felt that was just too heavy a lift, and so I thought it would be a good idea, to the extent that we're able to at least address the, those, those components I've described.
Then what I would recommend we do is have staff, you know, write a, a simple memo to the select board's office, because they have representation on hone. And just informing them of, you know, a summary of the changes that we're going to recommend as a result of, you know, discussions with Tim Sullivan and also the AG's office. Just so they're aware.
Katie King is going to be present at the meeting. She's kind of their liaison at the meeting, so she's going to be present.
And we're going to have meeting minutes.
And we'll have meeting minutes.
I don't, I don't see our taking a vote on Monday night.
No, I just.
This is information.
I think it's information.
Understand.
And I think, you know, getting, my getting and Chris getting a, a sense of where you are, so we internally can take this draft to the next step.
Thank you.
But I think, Adam, I think you're on to something, is that we want the select board to be involved as soon as possible, and Katie will be there, so I think, I think I think what you're trying to say is that the most, the more information we give out and that everybody is kind of clear as to how we're moving forward, the easier it'll be for us later.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to be a, you know, a proponent, well, we're going to be the proponent, but they're going to be, you know, speaking on it, and it's just good that they are aware as soon as we are you know, any changes that the board's making in the interim, so they're not surprised later, that's all.
Right.
Also on that agenda, and I'm going to finish it hopefully tomorrow, I'm going to let you look at a draft charge for the large house study committee and what the composition of that board, for that working group would look like.
Okay, great.
For Monday.
For Monday, right. And hopefully finish that. That's not in the packet yet. I'm going to add that hopefully by email tomorrow.
Okay.
The other thing I have is just to call your attention to fact, we, we learned about a grant through the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs that we're eligible for, and we've submitted an application to pay for the parking study that we talked about doing. So we've asked, I think the total award was like fifty-seven thousand dollars is what we're asking for, and we're asking for a grant of forty-five thousand. And I think we're going to actually look for some in-kind services, so the actual cash match would be only seventy-nine hundred dollars, and so I'm hoping that we'll be successful. So that eighty thousand dollars that we got, you know, is, we're not, we're not using it for this purpose, we're going to use it for another purpose. So we should hear back sometime in the fall as to whether we're successful.
Finance Committee going to be okay with that?
Well, they should be very happy that we were so creative.
Well, well, until, until you got to the point of we're going to spend the money on something else.
Well, we'll spend it on another planning project.
Hey, they allocated it to us, so.
They allocated it to us, and so we discovered this grant application, and now we can spend the money on something else. And the other piece I wanted to let you know is we're in the process of signing a contract with RKG, so that they'll be available to assist us after we get the comments back from the state with any modeling that's required as a result of comments we get back, or any adjustments that have been made into planning work that was done. And they'll be available to assist us and attend plenty more public hearings on this, the meetings of the finance committee, and they'll be available at town meeting. So we're setting that up for the fall. And the traffic study is, is, I'm actually, is going forward now, and, and I'm going to see the final, at least the draft report Monday.
And what about the stormwater? Do you have any heard anything about that, the stormwater study?
No, I.
They just met.
They just met. I think, I think Debbie just attended their first meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I wasn't in the room. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Go ahead. Seriously.
So I, the planning board appoint, appointed me to CPC. And I just wanted to keep you posted that that one of the questions coming up is relating to financing for the tennis courts. And Paul, I think you've sat before on, on the committee, and one of the questions that's coming up about process, you know, is should the, should as part of this CPC process be that the applicant, you know, if they have a special permit that they're dealing with, go to the planning board first? And I think they're two separate things. I think it's up to the applicant when they want to do it. One is for funding and the other is for a regulatory approval on an unrelated process and procedure. But I wanted to flag it so you folks were aware, and I'll keep you posted as to how the CPC advances.
Well, if you remember, Adam, they had gone to the CPC first.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they had gotten funding, but they had a warrant article that wound up being withdrawn. And I think, I think I politely took exception to the fact that they went to CPC before they came to us.
I certainly remember the exception.
I will say that when Steve Popper was running the projects for.
PPBC.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he always made sure that he had the planning board, he wanted, he wanted the planning board approval before he went to town meeting for the funding. He was very careful to do that.
So any other, any other items from anyone else?
Oh, it's already nine o'clock.
Yes, it's nine o'clock, so.
What am I going to do for the next hour?
Go to bed at usual hour, Paul.
No, Valentine's closed three minutes ago.
Abbott, Abbott.
Abbott's open.
So correspondence, we got a legal notice from Dover regarding a zoning change relating to brown mounted installation, solar installations, right, and rules for ADUs. So I think what I was asking Lee is why do we, why do we receive it, I guess, adjoining or adjacent towns, right? Share information for some of the zoning changes that they make?
Yeah, by law, they have to send it to all Newbury towns. We do that. We send our legal notices as well of our zoning to all towns of Black Dino.
So we beat them, is all I have to say, right? Because we, we already did it last year. So, Adam, you beat them. You beat Dover when you were chair, so way to go. Anyway, I, I think that's all we have, right?
It's all that, yes, I think that's it. Oh, yes, I just should have mentioned, I should have mentioned.
Oh, yes, it's here. I have the paper. So this, chapter ninety-one, which is waterways.
Yeah, I just wanted, it's, it's part of the permitting. It's part of the permitting process for the dredging that's going to happen back at the reservoir. It required a chapter ninety-one permit. As part of all that, the actual plans for that had to be filed with the, with the planning board and the zoning enforcement agent. I just wanted you to be aware that those plans have been filed with this office, including the town project. And I sign, you know, as, as, as a receiver of those, of those plans.
And that came in, I saw July tenth.
Yes, it came in yesterday.
And Natasha, I'm sorry, did, I might have just missed it. Did you mention the correspondence where we got a request for the town to answer certain questions on a subdivision by Dr. Ozwald, and then the response from Attorney Heap?
I did not.
Okay, so that's just another thing in the packet to note, correspondence.
I saw.
I didn't see it.
Letter from Dr. Ozwald. I don't recall seeing response from Chris Heap.
It's kind of like embedded in it, actually. Oh, sorry, it, Chris Heap drafted it. I was working with him on it. It's from Kate.
Oh, I saw, yes, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I saw that one, yeah.
No, that's okay. Thank you for bringing it up. Yeah, we got a lot of things of the. Yes, so motion to adjourn. So thank you, everyone. Second, okay, let's take a vote. Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Maybe. Aye.
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so. Meeting is adjourned.